Right, so I would like to start the meeting and I will accept the motion to go into Special Executive Session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright, so you'll give one first. You can run.
Okay.
Time for regular meeting.
Yeah, we didn't really miss time at any time.
Oh.
All right.
Did you? Or did you put that in? He was very hard to hear.
Regular listen.
Okay. Entertaining motion to come back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
On favor. Pursuant to our executive session, we will be doing a chief search for the police. We will be sending out advertisements in three papers, The Islander, the Altworth American and the Bangor Daily News. Just so you know, those will be coming out shortly. All right. Minutes not presented. On its recognitions and resignations, consider appointment of Alan Kimberly to the planning board as an alternate.
Move appointment and God bless him.
Second.
In all favor. Ben agenda, credit report second quarter 2023 announced cash, cash equivalents, investments, reserves and trust funds unaudited. Fact, whether it's an election analysis for fiscal year ended June 30, 2023 on audit. Island connections, thank you letter. Main municipal association and workers compensation fund dividend payment. Hancock County Commissioners regular meeting minutes from August 1, 2023. Who killed the state of Maine senior stabilization now? Annual notification of disposal rate change from Eastern Maine to Sycamore.
Move acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any, anybody want anything pulled out? They all favorite. No, there are none. Item seven unfinished business, mental health liaison position discussion.
Sorry, I want to quick make a Jeff. Want to make a quick report to thank you. Acting Chief Kearns for his quick response to an email I sent regarding speeding through Somerville. And he and his group with are going to collect some data, not by the signs. He got the data back from where the signs are on either end. But the, the report that I presented with it, this, at the signs, not where the problem is. It's once they get past them, so they're going to collect something and see what's happening down a little further and straight away. And I appreciated that response. So thank you.
Okay, back to unfinished business, mental health liaison position discussion.
So in the past, it was the memo, it was kind of, I think it probably summed it up pretty well, but just for the meeting, people are doing at home. I've been talking to Jake through Mount Desert side and Zach Kitter, it's HR. Third town combined. We ran into when we first proposed this to the budget, we had talked about that it was going to be an employee, we were going to hire. Kind of moved in the direction of contracting, so we felt like that was they could provide the clinical support. We worked with them HC, but we've kind of come to a crossing road where their salary structure isn't quite what the towns is or what we want the position to be. The rate of pay felt slightly substantially lower than what we're paying our dispatchers for. So we went back to our harbor council meeting, their last meeting, and they voted unanimously to, to go ahead and open that up for a physician to be hired for the town of Harvard. And I think the funds, I think those are the way they were putting the budget that boosted 40% regardless of who is a paid physician with a downed contract.
Yeah, from Mount Desert's perspective, it wasn't set up to care. It's in the line of our harbor contracted services in the same place where we have the deputy chief and the administrative system to the police and everything. And so the idea was that it would be tapped onto a similar agreement and a similar arrangement.
So an employee of Bar Harbor or Town of Mount Desert?
The plan right now would be the town will help with hiring employees that would be shared in a similar manner.
So I just more wanted to keep you guys in a room before we proceeded with anything. I'm going to be reached out to and to explain our situation, where we headed. The HR, Zach's on vacation this week, but as soon as he gets back, we're going to advertise and then we'll do a hiring process at that point.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, item B authorized GF Johnson Associates on behalf of the town of Mount Desert to solicit bids to repair approximately 200 linear feet of erosion on Seal Harbor Beach shoreline caused by a strong storm surge in 2020.
Move authorization.
Second.
This was something that we had been previously.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All favor. Authorized public works director burden manual on behalf of the town will lease a new front end loader for Boragard equipment in the amount of $142,849.36 and finance that lease through Gorman State Bank and lease payments being split evenly between the public works equipment reserve and the highways yearly loader lease line.
Having discussed this previously, I would move authorization.
Second.
All favor. New business, a public space special event application, Mount Desert Sustainability Committee tool swap. April 27, 2024, Northeast Harbor Village Green.
Second.
I have a question. We, we had some discussion about this. A pool swap and some other swap of barter and trade. And whether and what extent would interfere with the farmers market?
Yeah.
Is this date? A date that farmers market is held or? Because I think we did advise them previously that
I believe it's a Saturday.
It was not to interfere with the farmers market.
Yeah.
Farmers market's on Thursday.
Correct, yeah. I just wanted to make out another calendar in front.
Well, I mean, the other thing is that the farmer's market would have to, I mean, if they're
it really is.
Well, they, they haven't applied yet for 2024, so.
And then you don't start until what, June, June?
That's what I was wondering.
So in April, it could be wide open.
Okay. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor. Public space special event application, not that it's sustainability committee sports equipment swap. June 1, 2024, Northeast Harbor Village Green. Yeah, that's a
No.
That also is Saturday?
I believe it's a Saturday.
Sure, for the rain date of June 8.
Yeah.
I'm looking right now. Yeah, June 1st is a Saturday.
So approval.
Can we just?
Second.
That means we did the
We did the one.
A was tools, B is sports equipment.
Oh, I see. Okay.
All right. Do a motion.
There was motion.
Okay, all favor. Request approval to purchase a new security camera system from Omega Security Group for a total cost of $7,989. It'd be split evenly between the PD dispatch equipment account 1440800-57400 and the fire department building repairs and maintenance account
Move approval.
Second. All favor. Request authorization to solicit, solicit competitive bids for an FY24 cruiser purchase as part of the scheduled cruiser replacements.
Move authorization.
Second. Question, do we, is that going to be a hybrid or is it?
We're going to solicit bids for both with anticipation that we'll get the best if we can.
Yeah.
They do come, I think they're about five to six thousand dollars more, but we've started budgeting for the hybrids to be part of that C I D plan.
Okay.
Good. What's the plan for the one? Is it going to be traded in or is it going to be utilized within the town? Because it, it has what 79,000 miles on it?
Yeah, so we've done in the past, we usually part of the purchasing, whatever they're going to allow us for trade. I know in the past we've had public works.
Right.
You know, that shift is the accounting to accommodate that.
Right.
So if there's a need for it in the town, we'll make sure that we take care of that first before we trade.
Thank you. Yeah, good. Okay. All favor. Do we already both know?
I don't know.
Yep, yep. Explosion for clerks networking day, September 12, 2023.
Over cool.
Second.
An annual event, right?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, how do you network? I mean, do you meet? Where do you go?
Yeah, so they have, it's like a, a one day conference. So you get clerks from all over the state.
Okay.
They go and they have educational program lectures and whatnot, a business meeting, and then you network with your other clerks. Thank you.
Does the town cover your mileage and everything as well? Good. All favor. Office, oh yeah, okay. Review and consider adoption of official townwide policies required to qualify for a premium discount on workers' compensation through the main municipal association. One, ergonomics policy, which includes a policy, video display, training and ergonomics checklist. Two, incident review policy, which includes a program statement and policy. Three, lifting policy, which includes a checklist. Four, PPE policy, which includes a policy and a hazard assessment checklist. Five, return to work policy. Six, safety committee policy. And seven, slip and fall prevention policy.
We do a pretty good job going to make sure that the workers are safe and of course the side benefit to that is we get that a worker confirmation is resolved.
And we already have a lot of these, if not all of these policies in place, don't we? I just wasn't familiar with the lifting policy. I, and then recall having seen one of those, but I'm sure we had it somewhere.
So if we already have the policies, all we have to do is organize them and show that we have them, right?
Well, I mean, we just consider adoption. So I mean, I move adoption.
Some of that is also ensuring that we're getting all the checkmarks that insurers.
But they're complete.
What has happened is certain departments will have a policy that's applicable to their specific sector that may, you know, be very important, but these are the policies that we don't have the town hold that checking boxes from M A perspective. And so if there's language in these policies, it still allows for departmental specifics when applicable, but this covers our bases from town lines.
How much money we save?
That one off the top of my head, I know it, I know it worth doing. Yeah, I don't remember the number.
Lots.
It, it, it's a substantial amount and, and on top of that, yeah, it ensures, you know, employees safety, which is awesome.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor. Authorized public work. Authorized Public Works Director Brian Hinkle on behalf of the town to execute a contract with G F Johnson and Associates for engineering services for improvements to pre-parking lot.
Move authorization. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor. This includes the Silver River lot.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, item H. Authorized Public Works Director Brian Hinkle on behalf of the town to execute a contract with G F Johnson and Associates for design services for sidewalks in the mountain up to exceed $50,000.
Move authorization.
Second.
All in favor.
Is that the Somerville project?
Yes. Item I, authorized public works director Brian Hankel on behalf of the town to execute a contract with G F Johnson and Associates for engineering services for improvements to the tennis and pickleball courts at the Northeast Tower Village.
Move authorization. Second.
This will include any changes that need to take place for the skating rink or will this just set the stage for it?
So we we've talked about this, Jake and I, and we have authorization through the warrant that was passed for the bond, which doesn't include anything to do with the skate, so that money would have to come separate and that's being calculated through.
Right, I understand, but this.
This is just for the tennis and pickleball court.
I understand that, but will this work with the skating rink?
Yes, so they'll raise their separately and they'll be a sub consultant to G F Johnson and Associates who will work with him so that what he's doing makes sense relative to what they want to incorporate as well. So, yeah, it is planned, the planning work is being done. Separation of funding, right, and there are improvements built into the bond authorization that have benefits for the use of the skate.
I thought so, yeah.
Takes care of that eighteen inches.
Yes. Yes. So depending by them all.
Yeah, great.
Just making sure we're careful with how we separate.
All favor. Authorized Public Works Director Brian Hinkle on behalf of the town to execute a contract with Oliver Associates, Inc. for engineering services for replacement of the Babson Creek Bridge Santeris.
Move authorization.
All favor. Item K, authorized public works director Brian Hinkle on behalf of the town to contract with Coastal Energy for number two heating oil for fiscal year 2024 at fixed price of $3.08 per gallon.
Move authorization.
Second.
All favor.
You wanted a lot tonight, didn't you?
He was very needy.
Okay, any of the business? No. Treasures warrants. Okay, approval and signature needed, town invoices AP 2411, one million six hundred and fifty two thousand two hundred and ninety four dollars and forty six cents.
Move approval.
Second, all in favor. Approval and signature state fees and payroll benefits, AP 2409, AP 2410, and PR 2405 in the amount of $266,122.89.
No signature?
Second.
All favor. And acknowledgements, school invoices, school payroll, PR number four, in the amount of $147,980.27.
Move acknowledgement. Second.
Favor.
Much to the Germans. So second favor.
Good.
Yes. A lot of, a lot of quick things.